Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Good evening, everybody. If I can have your attention real quick, I'd like to ask Chief Austin to lead us in our invocation.
Let us pray. Dear Graces and Heavenly Father, we pray your blessings upon all those gathered here. Father, we, especially as we move toward a time of Thanksgiving, let us have a mind of gratitude for the many and abundant blessings you have bestowed upon our community through your loving and gracious nature. Father, we pray for our elected officials, our city staff, and the community members that we serve. We pray, Father, that throughout this time together, you give us all wisdom and a sense of fairness and justice as we work together to be good stewards of this great community which you have entrusted us. It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Chief Austin. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, November 18th, 2019, to order. And the city strongly recommends that you review tonight's agenda carefully, and if you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, please bring your comment card to the clerk as soon as possible. While the Milton Rules allow a speaker to turn in their comment card up till the time the clerk calls the agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards can be accepted, and the comment cards are back to my left over there and could be handed into Suti, our city clerk. And if, Suti, if I'd asked you to please make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the November 18th, 2019 regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. Your comment card must be presented to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating that you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you would like to make a comment, please bring your comment card to me now. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Councilmember Carol Cookerly.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
For the record, Councilmember Joe Longoria is absent. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, I just want to thank everybody for being here. We've got a couple of special groups. We've got some Milton Eagles here. We're really proud of you guys, and also some SWAT team members, and we appreciate you guys being here tonight. Suti, if you would please call the next item.
Our next item is approval of the meeting agenda. Agenda item number 19239.
Do I have a motion on the agenda?
Mayor, may I please ask for an executive session to be added to the agenda to discuss land acquisition?
Okay. All right, if I can add an executive session to discuss land acquisition during this meeting, along with the posted agenda.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda with the addition of an executive session to discuss land acquisition.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Koontz with a second, from Councilmember Jameson as read. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So do we have any public comment, general public comment?
We do not have any general public comment.
Okay. Move on to the consent agenda. If you can please read those items.
First item is approval of the October 21st, 2019 city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 192240. Approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Canopy Consultants, LLC, for city arborist services. Agenda item number 19241. Approval of a change order, number three, with Prime Contractors, Inc., for the Public Works Maintenance and Fire Storage Buildings. Agenda item number 19242. Approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Triscapes, Inc., for stormwater improvements to improve drainage at the Batesville Road and Taylor Road intersection. Agenda item number 19243. Our fifth and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of the subdivision plats and revisions at the conservancy at Sweet Apple Land Lots 1017 and 1018 at 13100 Sweet Apple Road. This is a large lot minor plat, creating four lots, 14.21 total acres, 0.28 lots per acre.
Okay. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second, by Councilmember Cookerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, next item, we're going to move on to our reports. Suti, if you would please call out our first item.
Our first item is a proclamation in recognition of the North Fulton SWAT team for excellence and service to our community. This is being presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. And as always, it's an honor to, for me, to recognize any of our folks that are in uniform that protect us every day, and I try to remind the public, keep in mind, everybody that you see here in a uniform wakes up every morning and goes to work, not knowing what they're going to run into, but they're willing to put theirself in harm's way to protect you guys and all of us. So for that, we want to have a deep grit of gratitude. So, so tonight, I'm honored to present a proclamation, and this is for the North Fulton SWAT team, which was established in 2012. It's comprised of the Milton, Alpharetta, and Roswell Police Departments. This team trains together and utilizes best practices among tactical teams in order to keep our citizens safe in times of volatile incidents. The team's operations are guided by the principles of the National Tactical Officers Association, and besides training together locally, the team attends National Level, NTOA, which is the National Tactical Officers Association Training Events in order to be fully prepared when they are called into action. Interestingly, the team is not only comprised of police officers, but also of crisis negotiators, telecommunications caters, a physician, a mental health professional, all who work as a team with the common goal of protecting our citizens and bringing peaceful resolutions in very, to these, in very difficult situations. We are certainly very fortunate to have a SWAT team of this caliber serving our North Fulton cities. And after I read this proclamation, if all that are here would please come forward and accept the proclamation. So tonight's proclamation, recognition of the North Fulton SWAT team for excellence in service to our community. Whereas, the City of Milton Police Department seeks to keep our citizens and visitors as safe as possible. And whereas, the City of Milton Police Department understands the importance of being fully prepared to meet the unique challenges of high-risk situations that imminently threaten the safety and well-being of our citizens. And whereas, to ensure safety in these high-risk situations, the City of Milton Police Department has partnered with the police departments of the City of Alpharetta and the City of Roswell to form the collaborative, highly-trained, and well-equipped North Fulton SWAT team. And whereas, the North Fulton SWAT team is comprised of an exceptional team of tactical operators, negotiators, telecommunicators, team physicians, and mental health professionals, all who respond in times of crisis. And whereas, the North Fulton SWAT team has responded to three incidents in the City of Milton thus far in 2019, two involving armed gunmen. And whereas, all three incidents were resolved peacefully without injury due to the team's expertise in tactics and patient communications, and the team's value for the sanctity of all human life. And whereas, the North Fulton SWAT team serves the citizens of Milton, Alpharetta, Roswell with valor and distinction, and with a passion for public service and safety. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the City of Milton hereby proclaim and recognize the North Fulton SWAT team's selfless service and intrinsic value to the safety and security of our community. And this is given under my hand and the seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on the 18th day of November 2019. And if I could ask all of our SWAT team members to come forward, as well as Lieutenant Chris Ward's here to, for a plaque, as well as Sergeant Gary Johnson with Roswell, and Sergeant Dave Freeman with Alpharetta, I believe is here. How do you want us to do, generally? Do you want us to get back on the dais, or?
Yeah, they're tall, so.
And again, I just, not only for myself and city council, all of our guests here tonight, but all of our citizens of all three cities, we just want to thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
All right, Suti, if you could please call the next item.
Our next item is a proclamation recognizing the NAFL Milton Eagles Fourth Grade Tackle Football Team Day. This is being presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
And again, here's another proclamation I have the honor of presenting to the North Atlanta Football League Milton Eagles Fourth Grade Tackle Football Team. We're very proud of you guys. I want to thank Councilmember Jameson for bringing this to the city's attention, and once I read this proclamation, I want to present, I want you guys to come up forward and present it to you. So I have a proclamation here. The NAFL Milton Eagles Fourth Grade Tackle Football Team Day. Whereas, football is a sport that requires physical strength and endurance, mental toughness, and substantial commitment of time. And whereas, the City of Milton is in its inaugural year hosting the North Atlanta Football League Youth Football Program at Bell Memorial Park. And whereas, the Fourth Grade Milton Eagles, led by Coach Sean Michael Janssen, is a team made up of 21 players, eight coaches. And whereas, the Fourth Grade Milton Eagles posted a season record of 10 wins, one loss, while defeating the Fourth Grade Cambridge Tackle Football Team in the GFA 2019 Lanier Bowl League Championship by a score of 18 to nothing. Wow. Whereas, the players on the 2019 Milton Eagles Fourth Grade Tackle Football Team are champions not only in the field, but also in the classroom, in the community, and in life. We're proud this great team is located in Milton, Georgia. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the City of Milton hereby dictate and proclaim Monday, November 18th, as NAFL Milton Eagles Fourth Grade Tackle Football Team Day in the City of Milton, Georgia. And this is given under my hand and the seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on the 18th day of November 2019. And if the, the team could come forward along with the coaches, and we will present you guys with the proclamation, if the council will join me.
Hey, if you can't see us, we can't see you, so make sure your face is in between the shoulders of your friend in front of you, okay?
Go Eagles!
Hold on one second, guys. I want to tell you how proud we are of you guys, the team, as well as the coaches, and also I want to tell the parents how proud we are because we see a reflection of what you guys do at home here with the kids. So, good job for everybody. So, thanks.
Congratulations.
Peyton, are you buying dinner for all?
I'll let him go.
Water boy.
Average?
Yeah. Yeah, sure, sure.
We fixed it.
Like you.
What?
We should have realized.
Suti, if we could please do our first presentation.
Presentation is consideration of an ordinance to amend Article 2 of Chapter 36.
John, where's David? Are we on, can you guys hear?
You are on.
Okay.
Door salesman of the Code of the City of Milton, Georgia. Item number 19245.
Can you give just one second, just till? Just down a little bit. Much excitement in all our meetings. Positive energy.
Right.
Suti, if you'd read that first presentation one more time.
Consideration of an ordinance to amend Article 2 of Chapter 36, door-to-door salesman of the Code of the City of Milton, Georgia. Agenda item number 19245.
Okay, do I have a motion on the first presentation item? Approval.
Mayor, I'd like to approve agenda item number 19-245.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second, from Councilmember Koontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, tonight, we don't have any items under, under the public hearing, zoned agenda, or unfinished business. So Suti, if you'll please read the first new business item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution adopting the 2020 City of Milton City Council Regular Council Meeting and Work Session Schedules. This is agenda item number 19246. Good evening again. Tonight, we're asking for the mayor and council's consideration of a resolution which will approve the 2020 council work session and regular meeting schedules. Before you, you have your wonderful oversized calendar showing the 36 upcoming council meetings for 2020. The blue highlighting indicates a regular meeting, and the red indicates a work session. In 2020, there are four regular city council meetings, which will fall on a Wednesday due to holidays being observed on a Monday, and those are Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, Spring Break, and Labor Day. In preparing the 2020 calendar for the following dates, we're taking into consideration the city's 11 observed holidays, which are highlighted in green, the Mayor's Day Conference in January, and the GMA Conference in June. Our first regularly scheduled meeting in 2020 will be on January the 6th, and our calendar, if approved this evening, will be available on the website and always at the table in the back by the public comment cards. So we respectfully ask for council's approval of this resolution.
Are there any questions on this?
I'll make a motion that we approve agenda item number 19-246.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Koontz with a second, from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Suti? All right, if we can move on to our next business item. Suti, if you'll please sound that.
This item is consideration of subdivision plat approval for Bethany Preserve Land Lot 889, 890, 911, and 912 at 13755 Bethany Road for a final plat, seven lots, 22.078 total acre, .32 lots per acre. This is agenda number 19247.
Just to remind everyone, it's been quite some time since I've been before council with one of these. The purpose of bringing it before you is if it's four lots or more, then it's a final plat, so that goes on new business. So that's why I'm here tonight to discuss this one. So it's Bethany Preserve. It's a final plat with seven lots on 22 acres for a total density of .32 lots per acre. So it's located just off Bethany Road. You see it highlighted here, just north of Providence Road. And then this is the plat itself. So you kind of see the lot layout here. It's seven lots. They range from 1.57 to 8.9 acres, and then Lot 4 here is 4.6 acres. And I take a closer look at the subdivision. So we have Hammock Lane here. It's just a single road that comes in. It's a private drive that's 20 feet wide to serve the lots. And then we've got a stream to the eastern side, and it's also got a lake here to the south, and this plat shows all of our local and state buffers that are required. Stormwater is handled in the subdivision. Stormwater is handled in the subdivision on an individual lot basis, so you don't see a master detention pond, you see smaller ponds on each lot. And then the lower edge of the subdivision is the larger estate lots, and these are largely floodplain areas. But it meets all of our codes. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any that you may have.
Okay, are there any questions?
No questions, just a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
It's great to see a large lot subdivision coming in like this. So, that's great to see.
Yes, I agree.
Yep, I would agree. I would agree. All right, any more questions? Thank you. No, I would agree with Councilmember Bentley. It's nice to see some, some larger lots and also thank you to the outcome. All right, I'll open up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make motion that we approve agenda item number 19-247.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Morick with a second from Councilmember Coontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Sudi.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. Moving on to our final new business item, will, Sudi, if you'll please sound that item.
Consideration of a resolution for the city of Milton barring the issuance of occupational tax certificates for the operation of shareable dockless mobility devices, including electronic scooters and bicycles. Agenda item number 19248. Mr. Parag.
Sudi, can I ask before, do we have any public comment on this?
Of one.
I'd like to go ahead and hear a public comment if we can first.
First.
If council's okay with that? Okay?
Mr. Gary Jablowski.
I'm Gary Jablowski, 2680 Grassview Drive, Milton. I speak only for myself. I'm in support of this resolution. I think it's the right move. It gives the, the city a time to study the issue and enact appropriate regulation. Some of you may remember that I might have brought this topic up earlier in the year. I'm neither in favor or against these devices themselves yet, but I want to thank the council for spending the time and energy to address the item properly. I'm confident that Chief Austin has a very good grasp on the issue and is well informed, and I think the council will make a good decision. But I thank you for taking the time to address it.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any more public comment?
That's all, sir.
All right, okay. Thank you for.
So, good, good evening, mayor and city council members. Today, I'm here to present you a resolution stopping the issuance of occupational tax certificate for the operation of shareable dockless mobility devices such as e-scooters or bicycles. The city is proposing to enact a moratorium barring for six months the acceptance of applications for occupational tax certificate for businesses that deal in any way with commercial use of dockless mobility devices. Six months will give enough time to the city to work with the city council to draft necessary regulations in place. We, as you know, we have numbers of regulations about zoning, about public right-of-ways, about traffic issues, but there are no regulations in particular about e-scooters. So this six months of moratorium will give enough time to the city to draft those regulations. As a way of background, I have prepared this small PowerPoint presentation. As you know, Chief Austin made a very good PowerPoint presentation on August 5th, 2019, at the city council meeting about e-scooters. Some of the comments from the mayor and the city council were, so the comments were some sort of mixed comments. So some members expressed their, they, they would like to wait and see if e-scooters become a problem in the city of Milton, but some city council members wanted to express their desire to move forward with these regulations. Since then, since August 5th, a local, a local business has requested to submit an occupational tax license for starting an e-scooter rental service within the city. Currently, the city does not have specific ordinances regulating the e-scooters rentals within the city. So based on this request to start an e-scooter rental business in the city, the staff is recommending that a six months moratorium be adopted barring the acceptance of applications for occupational tax certificate for businesses that deal in any way with commercial use of dockless mobility devices.
Okay, and just to clarify, this is not prohibiting, prohibiting the use of an electric bicycle or scooter, but just for a company coming in with a, a, the dockless system?
Yes, mayor, it's not for the personal use, but it's more about the business operation.
Right, right, okay. Matt?
Ken, I got a question for you. Do we need the term moratorium at all listed in the agenda item language, or no? I didn't see that in there, just from a legal perspective.
No, I mean, the agenda item is, I'm very comfortable with it. As far as you're talking about the actual language on the agenda itself?
Right.
I'm fine with it.
You're okay with that, okay?
Yep.
All right.
Okay, any questions? All right, I'll open up for a motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve agenda item number 19-248.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Coontz with a second from Councilmember Bentley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Sudi? All right, now we'll move on to reports. Is there anything the council wants to report on? Laura?
I have a, just a comment on our consent agenda tonight. Were the, the, it's the conservancy at Sweet Apple, which, as you recall, was the Ebenezer Road rezoning back in 2016. So I just wanted to, you know, we have now the benefit of all of the build-out of that. And I believe by my count, it's 17 fewer residential units than the 50 that were proposed with the rezoning. So I just have been paying special attention to that, and it's great to see that this council, I wasn't on it then, did make the right decision there. Two other things to do with our Milton Police Department. I'd like to congratulate Chief Austin and his leadership for the Facebook Live this past week. That was great to see. I think it was very well received. It was exciting. I know it was probably nerve-wracking for you all, but you did a fantastic job with that. I was very proud of you all, and I know we all are. And then finally, if you haven't seen the Milton First Responders' request for shopping with a cop, what a great benefit to our police officers to get to know our youth that need a little leg up during the holiday season. So, it's a great charity.
Okay, anybody else? Then we'll move on to staff, community development.
Mayor, city council members, just presenting some highlights from the department. The first is the City of Milton Comprehensive Plan Update. As we know, the city will very soon start the process of drafting the city's comprehensive plan. As per the state law, the State Department of Community Affairs is supposed to adopt the city of Milton's comprehensive plan by October of 2021. So that means the city council has to adopt the city's comprehensive plan in summers of 2021, let's say, May or June. So, we are planning to start the comprehensive planning process in March of next year. So it will be 15 to 16 months process. So currently, we are drafting the scope of work. The RFP will be on the street by next month, and we'll be starting the process by March of next year. As per the city's charter, we are supposed to establish a CPAC called Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. It will be a 16, 16-member advisory committee that will have one designee from each of the city council members and all the planning commission members and the chair of the DRB and the BCA. So we will be coming to you to, so that you can pick one of the designees on the CPAC. The second update is the Trail Master Plan Project. The update of the Trail Master Plan is progressing well. As we know, there's a lot of community interest in this project. We had a last advisory committee meeting on November 6th. On November 6th meeting, we discussed the phasing of the projects and the cost estimating. We got very, we got very good feedback from the committee members. The next committee meeting will be sometime towards the end of December, and we plan to pick, and we plan to bring in front of the city council the draft plan sometime in March of next year. The tree preservation ordinance update. On November 7th, we had a very good joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the Citizens Stakeholders Committee. So our office works, first worked with the Citizens Stakeholders Committee for four months, and the Citizens Stakeholders Committee finally adopted the draft ordinance in June of this year. Then we started working with the Planning Commission members, and we worked with the Planning Commission members for around three months. So the Planning Commission, the, and the Citizens Stakeholders Committee were, were on the same page for vast majority of the things, but there were seven or eight issues that there were some disagreements. So on November 7th, we had a joint meeting between the Planning Commission and the Citizens Stakeholders Committee, and I am very happy to say that after three hours of long meeting, the Planning Commission and the Citizens Stakeholders Committee are on the same page for the draft, for the draft ordinance. Planning Commission Chair Paul Morris with me is here today. So hopefully, the Planning Commission will adopt the draft ordinance on, in November 20th meeting, that's on Wednesday, and then we can bring the ordinance in front of the city council in December, in the work session. Our department is also working on a special use permit application for the Ashford Gardeners, the existing landscaping business, which is located on 16040 Birmingham Highway. The special use permit application will be heard by the Planning Commission on November 20th, and there will be public hearing in front of the city council on December 16th. A septic tank workshop is being proposed by the Fulton County for the residents of North Fulton. This septic tank workshop will be scheduled on December 5th from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., and the purpose of this workshop is how to basically operate and maintain the septic tanks in the area. That's it for me. Any questions?
Any questions for Parag?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, chief?
Greetings, mayor, members of council. As years coming quickly to a close, our crime statistics are exactly even with where we were last year, both in violent and property crimes. We do have a holiday crime prevention plan that we are putting into place, which includes strategic patrols of our shopping areas in order to curtail larcenies and entering autos, which we typically see on the rise during the holiday season. The plan also includes communications of our Take Lock Hide campaign, which has already begun, and we're also taking steps to ensure our citizens are aware of our vacation check initiative, so we can hopefully can curtail some burglaries and provide some peace of mind for our citizens as they're on vacation. On our streets and highways, I'm pleased to report this evening that our accidents in the city are down, overall accidents are down 8% and 20% personal injury crashes down in the city. And as was mentioned, we had our Facebook Live presentation just last week, and I checked right before I came, and we've had about 3,500 views. So we're very happy about that. It's a great way to, we feel like to engage with our citizens. So we appreciated the opportunity to do that. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Questions for chief? As always, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Information Services.
Good evening, mayor and council. As a few updates IT-wise, we have changed our position of public safety support. We have upgraded the police infrastructure to increase their speeds up to over 400% with a dedicated fiber. We also have successfully completed the network turn-up for the fire stations as well, which will allow us to cancel Comcast and save the city lots of money going forward to the, for now and in the future. We've also recently completed two RFPs, one for voice and one for telecommunications, I'm sorry, one for voice and one for print services. Those will go out on November 26th. Currently, finance is currently now preparing those for publication ads to citizens and anybody who may be interested. We are working on a fiber turn-up for the community place to increase speeds over there for more usage for FY20. This week, we will be implementing a Code 2 signature piece, which will unify city staff signature, so meaning everyone will have a simple signature, a standard signature, as well as internal email replies or have a certain signature with contact information going forward, which will give us more uniformity and allow us to communicate more effectively within, within staff. We've also upgraded the network at Bell Memorial Park. Before, it was on some Verizon equipment. We've now replaced it with some more stable AT&amp;T equipment, leveraging our relationship with AT&amp;T and the things they did here at City Hall and the police department. We also are, have gotten more fixed internet, internet connections versus DSL lines. If you're familiar with DSL, DSL was used a lot in the early 2000s. We're going to a more fiber-centric network, which is more modern. And also, we, with the recent attacks we've had in other cities, you've seen on the news, we did a penetr, on Steve's leadership, we did a penetration testing about a month ago, and we came out real well. Of course, everybody can be attacked, but our systems are hardening and can be prepared for any attack that may, may come down the line. That's it for the IT fourth quarter. Looking forward to a great FY20.
Okay, any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next is added on our agenda, a motion and vote. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss land acquisition?
Still moves.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. That's unanimous.